To tunnel meeting number one hundred and eighteen, it's October eighth, twenty twenty four. And today we're joined by Amayao, Duke, Guillermo, Kizzy, Ashley, Boy, Colly, Haley, Onise and AJ, who is just joining in from the waiting room. Welcome, welcome. Thanks all for being here. Um, you can see the agenda on the screen. We'll start with a couple of mentions and then we'll have a multiple updates from the R and D Guild. And after that, I want to talk about the ASI Summit or the Super Intelligence Summit. And after that, if we have more time on the clock, there's room for open topics. We'll have to see how that goes. And yeah, I do want to start off with a quick reminder on what the investor program even is and what we're doing. Basically, we're a group of like-minded people that are in tune with the mission and vision of Singularity Net. And that want to help out, that want to contribute to it. We do this through a wide range of self-organizing workgroups. And yeah, if you're interested in helping out in whatever way, there's definitely a workgroup that suits your skills and interests. So do check out our Discord server. There's how to join session, a section on there. And well, that will explain you how to join. So yeah, hope to see you on Discord. Then before getting to the meat of the call, um, quite a list of mentions. Um, starting off with the Marketing Guild. They are still very much open to getting submissions on community initiatives. If you go to the Marketing Guild Discord channel, you'll find, if you scroll up, four posts-ish. Um, you'll find a form there and you can propose initiatives that will be done together with the Foundation Marketing Team. Then I wanted to quickly shout out in the Meta Coders bi-weekly call. Uh, next one is on the eighteenth, so not this week, but next week at thirteen thirty UTC. And I figured, um, so far we haven't been really engaging with it and I feel it would be a good thing to do so. And I forget, yeah, let's have a quick check-in on that. Um, there's a couple of workgroups where it feels like it's a bit of a natural fit, let's say. For those who don't know, Meta basically is a language that works within OpenCock Hyperon. And well, seeing it's on the coding side of things, um, R and D comes to mind, um, the now resurrected AI Sandbox come to mind, comes to mind. So we do have, yeah, quite some um, workgroups that in theory could overlap. And yeah, it feels like we should do something with that. And I just wanted to throw it out there like. Yeah, I didn't know to call some attention to it, I guess. Um, any thoughts in the room there? I mean, we don't have to like do a full ten-minute discussion on potentially joining there, but yeah, I figured it would be good to mention for sure. See some chat popping up. No worries being late, Billy. Welcome, welcome. Uh, you also have your hand up, so feel free to.
Yeah, I was sorry for, my apologies again for being late. Um, but if there's something in regards to the AI Sandbox and I, and I see that it's, there's a meeting to take place tomorrow or Thursday, sorry, in regards to it. Um, and I'm wondering what would be the, uh, the main purpose of it being a workgroup or a guild? And is it not currently a library to promote AI Sandbox material? That's what I'm trying to figure out. Is it something that has to be managed? Or I'm just trying, you know, so I'm trying to get my head behind that. If you could help me out with that, Peter, I'd appreciate it.
Um, well, I can, sure, but as you mentioned as well, it's, it will be getting some attention, um. Yeah, we can pull it upwards, I guess. Um, Kizzy, could I ask you to give a little, well, a little update on it?
Alright, um, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, all good.
Alright, so, uh, basically, the AI Sandbox was like a workgroup initially, but due to, uh, the change of, uh, when Fly left actually, we had to take a pause for a while and set up the R and D Guild first. And now that the R and D Guild is actually working fine and able to deliver, now we are having plans of restating the AI Sandbox. So, uh, it's still, it's, it's at the same time, it's actually two different projects. It's not just the Sandbox, but it's the Sandbox and Think Tank. So the Sandbox itself is like an exhibition showroom where we come together, showcase AI tools, the applications and some other discussions around it. And then why the Think Tank is kind of an ideation hub where we collectively ideate on AI projects and some projects that we could actually push forward to the program that we could add some benefits in multiple ways. So, uh, it's actually gonna be live on Thursday and we invite you all to come in and try and contribute. Basically, Thursday is gonna be just going through the blueprints, seeing the, uh, what's is better, what we plan to do and how we plan to achieve it. And, uh, yeah, we understand about it.
Yeah, the reason I'm curious about all this and that I've never heard anything about. I've been here, I know, just since February of last year, but I started watching things back July last year. Um, and I'm basically the number one contributor to the AI Sandbox. And I'm just wondering why if it's being run by somebody, they wouldn't sort of reach out and say, hi, how you doing?
I can answer that in a way. Um, like, we used to have a very active workgroup with weekly sessions, um, where people would go in a session and then, you know, play around with all kind of AI tooling and teach each other, learn from each other. And, um, the channel you're posting in, um, is basically a remains of that, um, the workgroup. Well, now it's getting, um, revived, um, that will bring these sessions back. Um, but yeah, we, we used to have, um, all kinds of sessions in, in AI Sandbox context.
No, I'm still, I'm, no, I'm still, I'm still curious why nobody would let me know that there's somebody that was running it. Because I would have liked to be able to say, is it okay if I put this in here? Do you know what I mean?
Well, it's an open channel. You can post anything you like there, but, um, well, since the last quarter, um, the, the last iteration of Q four budgets, um, it's, it's being revived. So, yeah. I think your input is most welcome. I mean, I can't speak for the workgroup directly, of course.
Yeah, basically, your input is always welcome. I think, um, um, I think Vassu reached out to you, I should ask to that, but, um, I don't know, I can't, I can't say I'm not Vassu. But, um, if you wanna contribute, just feel free to hop in on Thursday and then share your thoughts and opinions. My game, I surrender.
Yeah, go for it.
Yeah, sorry. Um, no, I did wanna jump in, uh. Uh, this probably is a good thing to, to comment in tomorrow's meeting, Will. Uh, I think that whole thing was already presented on the, the whole process of budget and proposals for the last month. Um, so yeah, let's, let's join tomorrow there and, and help to drive this initiative, to have this AI Sandbox and Think Tank again on the table. Um, but if we are already done with this discussion, uh, I have to jump off and I do want to present voting results and the good stuff on the table, um, if you guys agree with that.
Uh, yes, it's pretty much, um, it will take one more minute to go through the rest of the mentions and then it's the, the next agenda item. Does that work?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, okay. Uh, yeah, and just for clarity, it's, it's Thursday, not, not tomorrow. Time flies, but not that fast. Um, okay, I hope that somewhat answers. Billy?
If you're, oh yeah, sorry, if you're looking for my input, yeah, please go, please go ahead Guillermo. And the gentleman actually answered my question perfectly. So, yeah, the only thing Wednesday and Thursday thing, he goofed up, but we're on the same page. I understand that. Go ahead Guillermo. If, if I'm the only one holding this up, please do, sir.
All good, all good. No worries there. And if you don't mind, I do want to wrap up the mentions first before we get to the R and D agenda item. Uh, there's three relatively cool ones. It's calling out events, um. Uh, tomorrow at fourteen UTC, we'll have a Death by AI session, very fun game, um, run by Colleen. So yeah, do hop on. It's on the Discord server, um, events channel. That's where it takes place. And then which is a bit premature because it's the day after next week's town hall. There's a NUNET community, all hands, on the sixteenth at fourteen UTC. I, I did want to call it out because, um, well, you can check the recording of the previous. It's, it's a really nice, uh, nice event if you're interested in NUNET. And then finally concluding the mentions, I want to call it for next week's governance workgroup call on the fifteenth at fourteen UTC. Um, we'll do a retrospective recap. So today during governance, we did a retrospective on the budget process for Q four. And next week's session will look at the retrospective we did for Q two, Q three and Q four. And, you know, figure out if there's some lessons to be learned across, over time. Spoiler, there are. Um, yeah, just wanted to quickly call it out. It's gonna be an interesting session. And yeah, that does wrap up the, um, the mentions and brings us to the R and D community projects updates. And I put some on screen, but the order there is completely, uh, free to change, of course. So if you have to jump Guillermo, by all means, um, yeah, take the floor, I would say.
Yeah, thank you. And yeah, Billy, I didn't, didn't mean to to push out the discussion. Well, I'm welcome and, uh, uh, yeah, good to have the AI Sandbox and Think Tank already in and a lot of place, a lot of room for playing over there. Um, um, but yeah, I, I need to pick up the key and these are good news that we wanna share with the community. Uh, so final results are already in. I'm gonna put the whole presentation. I'm gonna share screen now here on the chat so you guys can get on it and figure it out. But first thing first, Peter did mention how the program and the community can help on the Meta uh, lab. And, um, we have been for the last couple of weeks from the Latam Guild, uh, working on the idea of how we, uh, yeah, collaborate on this, how we put the region on the map on OpenCock and Meta. And, um, I did share a call with Haley and Pete on this. Um, how we can put together a SNAT Latam Meta Codeer Lab, following the idea, create a use case scenario, building async and sync kind of thing. Already draft a plan that I will share later, we will share later with you guys. And Pete and Haley have been helping on this. Um, so yeah, probably we can do that. I have our first regional Meta RFP playing on deep funding. And why not our code lab, uh, lead by community members from the region, helped by all core contributors, uh, like Andres Suarez and Mario, uh, big Singularity Net family members for a long time. Um, but the SaaS, uh, this is SaaS, you will find everything here. So you're gonna later on have an update on the collaboration skill database, okay? All the info on the third slide. At, at the end, you're gonna have the link of the video that AJ and Emmanuel, AKA Advanced Amayao, are gonna share with you guys. We're trying to put all the showcasing the tools, creating a video demo, uh, just to avoid connection problems and all of that. Um, but that's gonna come after that. And then Duke is gonna present the final results of the research of inclusivity for individuals with disabilities, Singularity and ecosystem. These are both projects finalized and deliverables all in group. Uh, but then the R and D Guild new operation system did come to the first phase, uh, second phase, sorry. Um, final votes came in. Uh, we have twenty-nine members of the community that cast their votes. Uh, three of them were non-core contributor yet, okay? We identify them, uh, you can find their names here. So Saint, AJ, um, Defreed, DeFi. Um, still not core contributors, some old core contributors that lost their status. But to have a fair voting system that, and to commit with the rules of engagement, we end up casting the vote of twenty-six core contributors, which altogether counted for fifty-four positive votes. The votes came in from September, the eighteen to October first midnight Cinderella bell time and um, results. Why, sorry, why fifty-four votes with twenty-six core contributors? Well, a little short description of the voting criteria that this went through. So core contributors were allowed to vote for more than one of the proposals, but only positive voting. Uh, no them voting in the, this operation system to avoid, uh, yeah, downgrading ideas, you know, with a positive vote, we believe that is good enough, um, to have a fair competition. Um, the winning criteria, uh, it was that general proposals need thirty to forty participation of quorum uh, from the core contributors vote. And more complex proposals will need sixty to seventy. What is a complex proposal? A proposal that would need more than three quarters to be developed. Um, and the final criteria of how we will allocate the budget, it, it, it will be, uh, the top scoring proposals will have a priority and simple common sense use of resources. Um, we have the four proposals that we shared, uh, last week, town hall, uh, research uh, and three development proposals. Uh, uh, number one project was a research for ambassador's participation in AI discussion of blockchain preferences with the Singularity ecosystem by Bernazaka. Then, uh, contribution portal integration, uh, expansion or second iteration by Rojo. Third, the legacy, uh, by Kenichi. And again, there is a second milestone. Uh, we'll work and develop on top of the, the bones, uh, the draft and the research put together on the previous quarter. And trying to help the budget and new proposals, uh, process, we propose a, an idea for creating a dashboard to help this process to go fluently. Um, and these are the results. Uh, the project number one, we received eight votes, but two of them came from the non-core contributors, so six in total. Um, the second proposal by Rojo, uh, the contributors portal integration, uh, received seventeen votes from twenty-six. Uh, the third proposal from Kenichi, the legacy, uh, second milestone for development, received uh, fifteen minus one, uh, fourteen in total. And consensus dashboard received also seventeen proposals, seventeen votes, sorry, from twenty-six. Uh, and the results reflect in this. Uh, as we mentioned, thirty to forty percent quorum from the total voting will allow proposals to go through the door. And these are the results. We have three proposals that will go under development. Uh, proposal number two by Rojo, proposal number three by Kenichi, and proposal number four by Guillermo and TC. Um, you will find all details in the presentation that I just pushed in. Thanks. And that's it from the R and D. Uh, I don't know who, who wants to go first. Um, but we have final results and deliverables to showcase with the committee. Um, and again, last on my side, this was exciting. This was fun with some friction in between, but we don't avoid paying defense sometimes. Uh, still was fun to learn and to have you guys participate in the decision of what we allocate the budget. So this was a really cool experience. And for the next one, I hope we, after retrospective session, we will get the system better and have more proposals from the community. Uh, yeah, you know, if we, if we build a trust with the community, we will, yeah, we will be delivering to the community. So that's it on my side. Thank you for your time and for participating in this voting experience.
Awesome. Well done. And I, yeah, just a quick remark on that participation. I, I put it in chat as well, but I, I do think it was so far the highest amount of, um, people participating in the vote. So congrats on that. Well done. Um, I have a couple of, um, other things, uh, one by Duke and one by AJ and Amayao. I'm not quite sure who to give the turn, but, um, feel free to take the turn. And if you need, um, additional co-hosting powers, let me just go ahead and. Amayao is saying Duke first. Not sure if Duke agrees, but, um.
Yeah, I do agree. Hello, everyone. Good evening. And thank you, Emmanuel, for rooting for me. I'm not sure why, but anyways, thank you. Um, part of why I did I quite agree that I go first is because, um, I do have to hop off and jump into another meeting, you know, happening concurrently. So, um, pardon me if I sort of like breeze through the presentation, right? Um, I think I'll need co-host access to be able to share, okay, research on the impact of lingual differences. Um, in, um, Q two, we did a research on the impact of lingual differences in the Singularity Net ecosystem. And, um, as part of our research, we actually did conduct, um, surveys, right? We did conduct surveys and we conducted, we had interviews with a couple of people within the, um, Singularity Net ecosystem that are bilingual, right? And, um, the goal was to be able to ascertain the player experience as bilinguals in the Singularity Net ecosystem, right? Or call them multilinguals in the Singularity Net ecosystem. And, um, what you have on the screen um, is the output from that survey, um, endeavor, right? Um, I'll be breezing through it just because, you know, it's probably not the most essential thing, you know, um, that I'm supposed to speak on. What we could identify from the surveys is that, um, first and foremost, multilinguals in the ecosystem had a bit of an issue, right, with, um, um, integration in the ecosystem because most of our communication is done with English, right? Um, whether it's written or spoken, right? It's mostly English. And so, um, in Q two, between Q two and Q three, we had, we had quite a number of people, you know, Asians, join the ecosystem. You know, some of whom do not have English as their native language. And so, um, um, of, of, of course, we also have the Latam guys who do not have English as their native language. So we conducted this survey to be able to ascertain first and foremost what their experience is or what their experience has been, you know, in the ecosystem as multilinguals. And beyond what their experience has been, we also tried to garner from them what the possible solution, you know, um, what possible solutions they would have loved to be created to cater to their unique concerns, right? Some of whom said, oh, they'll need a chatbot, you know, um, you know, multiple concerns. I mean, um, I would leave the link to the drive, the link to this, um, to this, um, outputs on the chat maybe after now. So we could, we could do, take our time to go through it, right? But multiple people left multiple concerns. I think our respondents did cover about eighteen to twenty people. Right? And then, um, people gave their concerns and all of that, right? And then project was spearheaded by Ubiyo. Um, I just happened to be a member of the team working on it. And then, um, um, pretty good news is that, um, we had done, we had put forward an extended version of this project, the tooling aspect of it in, um, deep funding, deep funding round four. And it got funded for the actual development of the tool. So, um, this was the pilot phase of the project. And, um, yeah, we did quite, um, extend, extend the, the, the work we're doing. So yeah, what you have on the screen now is, um, a pictorial representation of a, um, a Zoom conversation, sort of like the one we are having now with multiple people, right? You can obviously see there's Karen here who is obviously Asian from the way she looks. And there's Anita Williams here who pretty much looks American, right? Um, we didn't quite assign any, any race to anyone, but just from the look on their faces, we can say that, oh, this person looks this way, right? And, um, we, we posited a possible scenario where Karen may not have English as her first language and she may, you know, be struggling with, um, um, understanding the entire conversation that is going on, you know, in the course of the meeting. And so there is the AI assistant here, you know, if you look at the, the right side of the screen, where you can select your language, select language and then select your proficiency if you're a beginner, if you're an expert and all of that. And then you can click on stack assistance. And then here you can have a conversation, you know, or you can ask the, the, the AI bots questions about the meeting so far. And, um, it can simplify it here for you, right? By simplify, it just means breaking down, you know, the grammatical construct of whatever is being said to very easy to consume, um, bits of information, right? Or it can translate, translate what is being said in text to your local language, right? And currently, I mean, we're not looking at a very large pool of languages for now, you know, um, and, and so we did in the survey forms, we had requested for, you know, the languages that people would like, you know, to have represented in the ecosystem. And of course, because we have a lot of people from Latam here, you know, Latam had one of the largest numbers. I think we also had Indonesia, you know, following in terms of numbers and all of that. But yeah, this is just a simulation of, you know, the possible solution that, um, that we are creating with this. Um, let me see. I think there's a screenshot here that is a bit different. Hang on a sec. Hang on a sec. Yep, yep, here. So this is, I mean, like I said, you, you have two options. One is to simplify, the other is to translate. So if you're, if you're simplifying, right, you just, you just paste, I mean, it, it will just generate a simplified version of whatever it is that, you know, you wanted to simplify. And then you can decide to copy that, um, simplified text and paste it here and then convert it, you know, to your local language as the case may be, right? Um, as I speak, this is still a work in progress and, um, um, as we, as we achieve milestones, you know, even though uh, for, for, for the large, for the, for the largest part of it, you know, we have been able to deliver, deliver on the output that we intended for the Ambassador's program. So most of the work we're doing now is in, in, with respect to tooling on the deep funding side of things. But as we deliver outputs, we would also be diligent enough to carry the, um, the community along, right? Safe to say at this point that the R and D Guild has been doing an immersive work and extensive work in, 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 um, helping to integrate tools into the ecosystem that will just help us, you know, be more cohesive and, um, and of course be more effective as a community. So big shout out to, um, Guillermo and every other member of the R and D Guild. And, um, yeah, that's, that's pretty much about it from this side of things. Um, I hope you still enjoyed hearing my voice till this point. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, great to see. Any questions in the room by any chance? Now would be a good time.
What's the end call of the proposal, like the deep funding one? Is it the product is ready or like plugin is ready or what?
No, the project is not ready yet. We're still working on it.
I mean, after the, you have an active deep funding proposal, right? To build it. So the end of, and the end of the proposal is a ready plugin or a marketplace integration or what is the result?
Okay, please say again. I'm not sure I heard you. It's quite annoying.
So maybe the best is, can you share the link to the proposal so I can read what was it? It's like, I think I haven't.
Okay, you mean the link to the deep funding proposal?
Yes.
All right, sure thing. Let me, let me quickly get that for you.
All right, then I think we move on to Amayo or AJ. I'm not sure who of the two will. I think Amayo either is fine.
Okay, yeah, we are all in. So let me just show my screen. This, this is a collaboration school database worked done by AJ and I. Yeah, and let me check whether you can hear the sound. Can you hear the sound? But I'll, I'll, I'll do it. Is it audible?
Yes, we do. Well, we can hear something, but understanding, it doesn't really work.
Yeah, so basically, so basically the, the collaboration school database is to have a comprehensive database of members with detailed skill sets and their availability, where particularly on-boarders can leverage on their information, on their skills and how they can help the guild, yes, ensuring that kind of collaboration. So that's basically the whole thing about the project. Possibly Guillermo can share more on that. Yeah, so because of our time, I'll just do a quick run through on the demo, then leave room for questions. So. Let me lower this. I will explain along. Yeah, so we, the user can, I mean, access the forms through their email. So this is the first one. You have to sign up first. Thank. So you sign up, you get verified. Let me make this a bit faster. So after that, you, you log in. Trying to make it a bit faster so that I redeem time. Yeah, so it's, it finally redirects you to the form where the new, the member can fill in. Yeah, so this one side, so you can also sign up with your Discord. Just to give the flexibility with users, I mean, how they wish to sign up. So it redirects them to the forms and also do a get up. Yeah, so these are ways that the user can sign up. So now we're in a collaboration school database. Just, just, just a test that we did. Yeah. So they have their name. So I drop to the biography. They put in their skills. I think that, that, that's a major part of the project to get the skills of the members.
Advance, can you mute the video then? Explain, explain on the way.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, I said, can you mute? Yeah, and explain on the way.
Okay, okay. Thanks, thanks for that. Okay, thank you. Yeah, so I mean, thanks for that. So the inputs, they are their skills, soft skills and hard skills. Yeah, so I mean, but we want to, because of clarity on us, on their skills, you want to find out, yeah, I mean, where they are expecting. If it's within programming or marketing, they can actually have it in there. So there's just a test. So within programming, maybe I'm, I have, I have expertise in Python programming language. Yeah, and my years of experience, maybe 35, so five. And my proficiency in that language, intermediate, advanced, so I choose intermediate. And the languages that the member speaks, yeah, to also access their languages, yeah, for other future plans. So, so there's the plans and availability section to know the availability within the guild or within the ambassador program. Yeah, and I mean, why do they want to join Singularity Ambassador Program just to know from them? Yeah, because of the number of ambassador programs. So what interests them? So this is a test. We put in something to contribute my skills and research. I mean, how did they find interesting about ecosystem? So these are information that you will need from all the members to get to know their, their interest, that's tracking and that, I mean, made them to be part of the ambassador program. So how do they want, how do they plan to impact the program? From their skill sets and contributing, anything, so they input in there. Yeah, and so when we are done, yeah, so we are done. So, so basically, basically this, the forms, yeah, and the, the main thing is to have a database of all their information. Yeah, so the forms is a link to, to that, so that we can actually know and get the information, leverage, utilize the information of new members. Yeah, so we'll move on. So we, we, we'll move on to the admin portal. So basically, basically, there are admins that will be handling the portal, yeah, especially on-boarders, yeah, who will really, who will be in need of the information of these members, yeah, on how they can help the guild with their skills. So this is just the admin parts for the admin portal. Yeah, so we actually, we actually went with three views, we are without me, viewing according to their availability, with their reason for joining and viewing according to their skills. And to members is the general view, where it gives you access to all their information. So you can view according to members. So, so this is a test that we had, Immanuel, Yenulua, as in the test that we're doing, yeah. So, and this is a number of tests that we've done with some of the guild members, yeah, to check the performance and response. So you have all the information here, all the information, their biography, their skills, soft expertise, experience, proficiency, languages, availability, their reason for joining the ecosystem, how they want to impact, all the information that we did are here. Yeah, so the, the admin don't have edit access to their, to their information. It's just only view access and how they can utilize the information that we have in that database. So that's the, the, the access the admin has, no edit access. Yes, especially to, to make the, the work simple for on-boarders. When it comes to skills, they can actually go to the skills and reviews to check all their skills and, I mean, neglect the biography. Yeah, so it gives them all their skills. When I say their skills, they can query and search for skills and also you can actually filter. Okay, I'll get there. You can actually filter. Let me just make this fast. Sorry, I hope I'm not making this bold. I hope you can hear me well. Yeah, and pause it. So you can actually filter based on a beginner or intermediate or advanced, yeah, just to know the beginners in the guild and where on-boarders can lead them to, yeah, in terms of training, to know people, to know the ones who are advanced, who have, I mean, much, yes, yeah, in terms of experience on their skills, can actually query, sorry, I mean, filter that to know their names, to know everything about them. So basically, basically that's how the whole collaboration school database works on the, on the admin portal side. Yeah, so I don't want to take much time. I'll just leave room for questions to AJ and I. Yeah, thanks a lot.
Nice one.
Jim, Peter?
I don't know. I wasn't actually gonna call out your question in chat, but go for it.
Actually, it wasn't about, it's right. I didn't want to respond to the question. I wanted to respond to the presentation and the progress that we're making and the depth of the project itself. The, the areas that this can, is going to be able to touch as, as it develops beyond a Singularity Net ecosystem, it will be a valuable tool, I think. And I just want to applaud the progress that the individuals are making, are moving the project forward. That's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, I would have a question. What are the next features for this? And yeah, I guess this current result, what was shared, was to kind of set the stage for the infrastructure and kind of get the hand of how to gather information and how to visualize this information. Because this is not the solution we really need, but it's probably something that we can build on. Because we can't build on Google Forms, we can't build on the other like Power BI or models that we're using. But this is something now the community holds and we can start integrating different forms and information. So yeah, just wondering what is the next step for this collaboration skills database?
Okay, since Unyeka wants to talk maybe for that.
Oh, advance, you can go ahead, but I just wanted to chip in something. So the, the actual goal, where we are looking at is that we want to integrate to other projects with this project. So basically, we want to integrate the web two contribution dashboard and then the legacy, the legacy website. Now, looking at the, the entire framework, the collaboration school database is to gather the information. Now, for instance, let's say I'm a new member in the program and I, I have the web two contribution dashboard. Now, obviously, if I go and sign up, I can't get my data. So that contribution dashboard is for those that are already members within the program, based on the data that was got from treasury and some other platforms. So now, if you want to get the data of new members, now this is where the collaboration skill database comes in, whereby members can input the data and now the on-boarders, the on-boarded work with this, this skill, this tool itself is a very helpful tool because this could be integrated with the on-boarded work, could have a collaboration with the on-boarded work group, have a collaboration with different guilds and workgroups, basically, because the on-boarders can come in here, get the relevant data and onboard members based on their skill sets. Also, work group leads can also have access to this tool, come into the tool, look at, let's say for an unnecessary skill that they, they, they find interesting and try and onboard members into their work. So this tool is going to help a lot. And the goal here is to integrate all three projects together, whereby when you come into the program, if you are a new member, you come into the collaboration skill database and input your data, the data gets stored and you get onboarded into the program. Then if you are already an existing member, you can see your data from the contribution dashboard, the web two contribution dashboard. And we are going to have this reputation system from the project that is working on, where members get to, get to end sovereign tokens and NFT based on the, on their contributions to the, to the ambassador program. So all three, all three projects are, the goal is to integrate all three projects together as a single project. So this is just the beginning and I, and I believe that going forward, it will, it will be something massive, that's just. So I, that's a lot of that's chipping from all this talk.
Yeah, I think if, if you've said, you said everything, yeah. Another thing that I wanted to add was, yeah, the integration also and probably we, we, we can automate it with, I mean, especially when it comes to their skills. Yeah, I mean, not necessarily a pointer on-boarders should just come in. But whenever there, there are some skills regarding, maybe hard skills on, let's say, marketing, you can actually push them to some of the admins that all this pop up. These are people who have DCs in marketing, probably can just direct them to the marketing guild, yeah, and how they can help with. Yeah, I mean, there are, there are much to explore in there when it comes to maybe automating, yeah, but I think the integration really counts a lot, yeah, when it comes to the whole project.
Yeah, great stuff. And any further questions before I go on and? Well, basically complimenting the R and D Guild, showcasing what they're doing for the past. I'm not sure what timeline makes sense there. Quarter, I would say, at least, longer. Yeah, it's just great to see that unfold and also only just getting started. All of a sudden Zoom thinks I'm speaking Spanish, indicating more of the need for this proper accessibility tooling.
That might be a bit of relevant. I've been a bit of slacking. We have this cut that is proposals, right? And it's also election time, so I can't really do much. My days are quite quick, but I do have a one draft and I don't know when I'm going to be sharing. So maybe because it's related to the treasury dashboard and well, we are, like you already mentioned, all this treasure stuff, it is recognizing contributions and you can, some people, we have used tags to recognize skills. We just haven't done the analysis to make it big and work on that. So yeah, this once, whenever we get ready or you get ready, I think these things eventually will merge because what we are building is also to recognize and people and give access to show and see each other what we do.
Yeah, absolutely. I imagine there's quite some potential, just on integrations, right? Yeah, speaking as a non-DAF, I, I don't know either of the projects from the technical side of things. So in my mind, it's very easy to combine the two. If it works like that in practice, practice is probably a different.
Well, we are making that proposal so that we don't forget integration and interoperability. These are of course, something that we cannot like print in ambassador program because the budget is going to get very heavy. However, we are shipping on it either way, like the day to be, week to week and day to day, we are moving towards that. But in Ukraine outside, we just make it much faster.
Yeah, awesome. Um, let me hop back to screen sharing for a little, because I have one other topic I do want to touch on and I'm, I'm very aware of the, the clock. And that is a combined event in Bangkok in November 10th and 11th, starting with the Singularity Net Ecosystem Festival on November 10th and then the Super Intelligence Summit on November 11th. And that one is hosted by Ocean Protocol. Look at that, put on the flyer for it. Yeah, as you can see, Oasis is co-hosting, there's Numerai, ASI Alliance. So basically, I, I was, I just want to quickly introduce it right now, because in, in a way, we could kind of do the same we did in, at the BGI summit and have some ambassadors be present during this event. So yeah, I just wanted to plant that seed, also noting that this is about a month away from now. So timelines are relatively short. Yeah, I don't know, looking at how we did Panama, we utilized reserves for. Yeah, I don't know, looking at uh, how we uh, did Panama, we utilized uh, reserves for um. Being able to send people over. That is not something which I like to do lightly. At the same time, every now and then I think like, yeah, that would be kind of a cool use for, for reserves. To, to have people, you know, physically meet, uh, not just among ambassadors themselves. Uh, but also within the, the wider ecosystem with all the. Yeah, I experts walking around at an event like that, it's just. Mind blowing, to me personally. Um, so yeah, for now, I think I just want to plant that seed a little. Um, I do think we should have a bit of conversation around this on relatively short notice. Um, just because you can't arrange this within a week, right? You, you need, like, a month is already relatively short. Um, yeah, that's why I figured, um, I would want to bring it up. Boy, you have your hand up. Feel free to.
Yeah, hello everyone. Uh, I wanted to ask, um, stuffs like this, um, like, you know, we got DJI, we got the. Supply Intelligence Summit coming up and probably any other summit that's gonna happen within the year. I don't really know. I'm just thinking if we have these things planned out um, in the very first quarter of the year. If we have them figured out or if we have them tentative and plans, right? So we can get to roll out these things so that people who have interests and maybe resources to enable them attend. And whose countries are really far away from these places can start making preparations um, in advance, right? I mean, we had the same thing in DJI and some persons could not attend because they, they could not, you know, secure visas within relatively short period of time. So I'm just asking that, moving forward, you're gonna have things that is come up like three, four months. You know, so people get time to prepare and, you know, commit resources effectively to be able to part, to part of this in person. Yeah.
Yes, but I'm not gonna, I can only agree with this. Um, it's, it's far from a deal. Um, this, you know, eleventh of November, the, the, the day before it is the Singularity Net Ecosystem Festival, so on the tenth. That is a month and two days away from now. I, I, I can only agree with it being too short notice. Um, at the same time, I didn't quite feel like it would be by definition too late to even bring this up. Uh, so I, that's, that's why I'm bringing, uh, bringing it up right now. Uh, but yeah, fully agreed. Um. Yeah, what to share on this, besides planting a little seed, um. I think we would have a reasonably fitting. Quickly check the Discord server if you have a decent channel for this. I'll make a post. Yeah, general channel and then link to uh, the property.
Again, a temporary, a new channel just for this event until it's over. Yeah, it looks like amazing opportunity, but I'm like, this is a pretty short notice for me now. I know somehow everybody is doing events now and people are attending everywhere, but the capacity is like impossible. But who, whoever can make it and if this make, is going to be done, like, I'm all for it. I would actually, there was, I don't know, this Twitter space, I don't know where it happened, did it happen, like, where all three people came together? Uh, I would like to see more of like, to understand how can these three people combine and kind of have what we are doing here. Creating some kind of guiding documentation, how we collaborate and how can we align and then what do we even want to do? I'm sure all of how we have like different strengths now.
Yeah, very true. I, I think it was a very nice uh, first step, um, having these connections made uh, last week. Um, but I got the impression, at least from Ocean's side, they were quite happy to uh, give it a follow up. Um, I think from our side, that's the same, so that will definitely happen. Um. Not quite sure, um, if we should have further discussion on, on this specific event right now or if it's better to do that, I think. Um, just a quick check in the room, any, any thoughts, any? Well, anything in general. Feel free to uh, go ahead and simply unmute. Or if you feel like uh, chiming in on discussion on Discord, uh, that would be most welcome, because. We don't really have a process for approving this, right? It's, it's something that clearly doesn't fit a specific um, workgroup budget. Therefore, um, outside of reserves, I'm not seeing too many options. Um. Yeah, and as I, as I said, I, I don't want to lightly uh, utilize the reserves for, for, well, for anything. This is something we, we should be careful with, so, yeah. Um. Yeah, without people chiming in, I think that, that kind of covers it for now. Um, that does bring us to the final slide for today. Um, which brings a quick check if there's any other, uh. Preferably somewhat short uh, topics or, or short questions uh, we should be touching in on right now, because we can. I can see a lot of hands are unmuted, so I can assume, I, I will assume at least, um. That's, uh, we're kind of all good for now. Um. I think it's a wrap. So, yeah, thanks again to uh, specifically R and D Guild for, for sharing all these updates. And also for everybody in the room, um, sharing your time with us and, and being here.
Thank you very much, everybody, and thank you, Peter, and my apologies for interrupting you, but I just wanted to get that in. Thanks, man.
Well, good, good. I was gonna wrap. Um, just hope to see, uh, see you on one of the many upcoming community posts. And if not, we'll speak on this one. That's it for now. That's all.